Okay, Mayor, you're ready to go. Hold on one second, we gotta turn that off. Okay, we'll try that again, Mayor.
Good evening and welcome to the special meeting of the Borough of Ringwood. Today is Thursday, May 21st, 2020. Because of the coronavirus emergency, the following committee shall apply to conduct the meeting. Attendance at the meeting shall be the municipal manager and essential staff at the Borough Hall in the council chambers. Members of the municipal council will be in attendance via Zoom. The meeting shall be telephoned on Public Actress Channel 77, recorded and rebroadcast on Channel 77 and on YouTube. The public may also observe and participate in the meeting. Nicole, statement of compliance, please.
Adequate notice of this business meeting has been provided in accordance with the open public meeting law, PL 1975, Chapter 231, setting forth the time, date, place, and purpose of this special meeting by Resolution Number 2020-103, adopted April 21st, 2020, through a legal notice published in the Suburban Trends issue of April 26, 2020, and through notices emailed to the following named newspapers and posted on the bulletin board at the Borough Hall on April 22nd, 2020, The Suburban Trends and The Bergen Record.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Schaefer? Deputy Mayor Spear?
Here.
Councilmembers Bolton?
Here.
Ferretti?
Here.
Matty Olandis?
Here.
McCracken?
Here.
O'Keefe?
Here.
Also present Borough Manager, Director Department of Public Works, Scott Heck, Municipal Clerk, Nicole Lynn Meyer, Borough Attorney, Richard J. Klemek, and Sean C. in professional engineer. The pledge of allegiance has been confirmed before the meeting started. Mr. Heck, before we begin, could you go over the protocol for tonight's meeting?
Sure, Mayor. Tonight is a hearing, so it's important that the record is clear. We've had a couple of these meetings this way, and it's worked out okay. I would ask everyone to place themselves on mute, so that we don't get any unnecessary feedback and noise on the recording. The documents were all placed online in advance of the meeting, and the mayor and I went over this process today. First, we're gonna have our attorney and our engineer, they'll outline the application and review their report. When they've completed their report, the council will ask questions that they may have of the professionals. The quarry may then have the opportunity to address the council. Then the public will have the opportunity to address the council. And then the council will have, I guess, their deliberation. If you're a panelist or an attendee, I would ask that you raise your hand or get my attention before you start speaking, because we wanna make sure the recording is accurate. So, as soon as we get a break, I will call on you, but I would ask that you let the professionals go first, and then we'll, one by one, go around and see if anybody has any questions. Mayor, does that sound like the plan that we talked about?
Sounds good to me.
So, with that, I would assume that, Mr. Klemek, you will take it from here?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Heck. Good evening, Mayor, and all other attendees. This is the license, second license hearing on this particular application. It was a hearing approximately two months ago, was carried to this evening. What we'll do this evening is, you'll hear the testimony of Mr. Sean Isken, who is the engineer for the municipality. He's an expert in civil engineering, more specifically mining and quarrying. He has been reviewing and inspecting the quarry for several years, and he did an inspection regarding this particular application. From his testimony, you will also learn that he's reviewed the application in length, he's reviewed all the documents, maps and plans submitted with the application, and he has submitted a report. As Mr. Heck said, the application, consisting of over 100 pages, along with all the maps and plans and Mr. Isken's report, is on the Borough website and can be viewed at any time. I will ask Mr. Isken some, I will ask him questions to, for him to elucidate exactly what the issues are, what he's done, and what are the results of his inspection. Mr. Isken?
Yes.
Yes, I will swear you in. You saw me swear the testimony you're about to give, this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. Mr. Isken, would you state what your profession is?
Yeah, I'm a licensed professional engineer, licensed in Pennsylvania, New Jersey, Maryland, Ohio, and West Virginia. Been practicing in the engineering field for over 38 years. Primary practice is in mining and civil engineering. Have been representing mining clients for decades. I've worked with the Borough of Ringwood. Had this quarry since the mid-'90s, and actually helped formulate the first Borough ordinance on quarrying in the Borough of Ringwood. Been qualified as an expert witness in mining in various jurisdictions and states, including New Jersey, Pennsylvania, and Maryland. And I own my own practice, CME Engineering, and through that practice, I reviewed the application that is the subject of tonight's hearing.
Mr. Isken, would you describe the quarry location in brief for those persons who may not be familiar with it?
Yeah, the quarry is along Westbrook Road, somewhat on the western edge of the Borough.
And, you know, can you tell the folks what the size of the quarry is? It's eight inches?
License size is 95 acres, although that much acreage has not yet been affected. You know, the affected area is probably more in the 50 to 60-inch range at this point.
Okay. Now, Mr. Isken, this application, this license application technically is for the period December 13, 2019, to December 2022. As often happens with these applications, they're submitted, they're reviewed, more information is required, so it does take time for the data submitted until the final hearings on this application. Can you tell the public what documents you review in connection with this application?
Sure. The quarry, within that, when the quarry submitted a, an application in June of 2019, and that application, I believe, is posted on your website, and there's various components of that application that address the operation, the legal entity of the quarry, the list of other permits that the quarry has that are necessary to operate, the tons of material to be extracted over the license period, a description of operations, a performance bond calculation, certificate of insurance. All those documents, and associated maps that are required, which include a truck route map, a operations map, a three-year reclamation plan map, a final reclamation plan map, an erosion and sedimentation control plan, and associated cross-sections that show profiles of existing conditions of the quarry and proposed final grades.
Well, just as you said, these are online, and folks can view them themselves at their leisure, but just some of them, again, just so we educate everybody, for instance, there is a water allocation permit. It's required by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection that the quarry submitted, which is effective through 10/31/2024. For example, what is that about? Can you tell us?
That is a permit issued by the New Jersey DEP that allows the quarry to pump groundwater from the pits. You know, as their mining groundwater accumulates in the pits, and that allows them to pump that water.
There is another permit, soil erosion and sediment control are required by the Hudson-Essays Paseo Conservation District. Would you tell the public what that is about?
Yeah, that permit is, it's a permit that the quarry has to submit to the Paseo Conservation District to demonstrate how they will prevent erosion and sediment-laden water from exiting the site.
In addition to the application and its attached documents, did you have occasion to review maps and plans submitted with the application?
Yes.
Okay. And would you explain what those documents consist of?
Sure. The maps and plans, as I mentioned briefly before, are a group of seven drawings. And the first is a, basically a cover map that shows the location of the quarry and the primary truck routes in and out of the quarry, and what roads those are on. The second plan is the operation plan, and that shows the area that is proposed to be excavated during the three-year license period, the facilities of the quarry, crushers, conveyors, stockpiles, that sort of thing, the existing water treatment ponds, the access road and scale, lighting features that are in the quarry. It extends from the quarry boundary out 500 feet and includes topography, property ownership, and structures and roads in that 500-foot surrounding area.
And who prepared these documents?
They were prepared by Dykstra Associates on behalf of the quarry. There's another map then, did you interrupt me? Excuse me?
Go ahead, I'm sorry to interrupt, go ahead.
I think you were gonna ask me, are they licensed? The application requires that all maps and plans be certified by a New Jersey Licensed Professional Engineer, and those original documents have been delivered to the courthouse, or, I mean, to the Borough Office.
Do these maps, are these maps and plans in accordance with the Borough ordinance requirements?
Yes.
And you have had a chance to review these in detail?
Yes, in fact, I've had several reviews of these maps and plans over the last few months. Probably those seven or eight different comments I've transmitted back to the quarry to make revisions to the plans, to become in conformance with the ordinance.
Excuse me, one second. Did you have occasion to consolidate your review in a certain report submitted to the council, submitted actually to the Borough Clerk, but for the use of the council in this action?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, on May 19th this week, I received the final mapping revisions for the renewal application, and based on those, I sent a letter electronically to Nicole Langemeyer, outlining my review of the review of the renewal application, and as part of that, I also provided a summary of my inspection that I conducted at the quarry last week on May 14th.
Looking at your report, would you refer to the heading Renewal Application Review?
Yes.
Okay. Then you'll see paragraph number one?
Yes.
Okay, Section 26-4.8. You have, you have name and address of applicant, then you have status satisfied. I just wanna understand your procedure here. In this report, you refer to a specific section of the ordinance, is that correct?
Yeah, the ordinance requires certain documents and information to be provided by the applicant, so in my renewal letter, I go point by point through those requirements, and lists are either satisfied or outstanding.
I see. All right, so if we go through the list, since I think most folks can follow this, section one is name and address of applicant, section two is applicant's consent, section three, operations map. What was your conclusion on operations map, just for the record?
Yeah, the operations map, as I previously described, is a map that shows the area to be excavated during the license renewal period. It shows topography, it shows the 500-foot offset from the boundary of the quarry, ponds, ditches, roads, traffic patterns, crushers, stockpiles, that sort of thing.
Mr. Isken, what is the amount of material that the quarry can extract in a given year?
413,000 tons.
You know how that figure was arrived at?
Excuse me?
You know how that figure was arrived at? Do you recall what that came about?
I believe that was a result of a court order many years ago.
I see. And so, in effect, this particular quarry has a cap on how much it can extract every year, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's 413,000 tons.
Yeah, we verify that annually. The quarry is required to submit annually updated topographic maps, and then we compare the prior year map to this year map, and perform a volume calculation, and estimate the number of tons that has been extracted from the quarry.
Okay. All right, going to number four, I think we would cover that, that refers to licenses, permits, and approvals. You're satisfied that all were submitted properly?
Yes, they have an additional mine permit that they must maintain to operate the quarry. So some of those are from the Department of Labor, there's a mine registration, there's an explosives permit, there's a scale from the New Jersey weights and measures for the scale, New Jersey DEP has authorized air quality permits, water allocation, and then PDS permit. They have a Highlands exemption permit, and then the soil and erosion control plan for Paseo County, as you mentioned previously.
Okay. Section five refers to insurance. Can we have your comments on that? I'm sorry, paragraph five, Section 26-4.8.
Yeah, if you notice in my letter, it says it's satisfied, and there's a contingency. The application, when it was submitted, included the certificate of insurance, however, that certificate expired April 1st of 2020, and I was provided today with a updated certificate of insurance that I subsequently emailed to Ms. Langemeyer at the Borough.
Okay. Number six, tons, we previously discussed, so if, so the applicant's proposing during the three-year license period to extract how many tons?
1,239,000.
Then that would be based on 413,000 per year, is that correct?
Correct.
All right. In number seven, you referred to well study, can you comment on that?
Yes, part of the prior court order required the quarry to perform a study to evaluate the neighboring wells, and that was performed probably two or three license renewals ago, and it hasn't changed, so that's still approved and satisfied.
Okay. Number eight is the dust management plan?
Yes, I have reviewed that, and that's also part of the air quality permits that are issued by New Jersey DEP.
Now, number nine, Section 26-5.8, the rehabilitation plan, your comments on that, please?
Yes, I read that. That plan requires the quarry to demonstrate the final grading of the quarry when the license period ends. If the quarry were to terminate operations in three years, they would have to reclaim the quarry, and this rehabilitation plan shows how that does, how that will be performed. It includes an evaluation of post-rehabilitation drainage, there's a lake that'll be constructed on the property, a spillway, and then we also have to perform a stormwater evaluation to make sure that when the quarry is rehabilitated, that we won't create a stormwater problem to, you know, Westbrook Road or the residents downstream.
All right, and the issue of the rehabilitation plan ties into the issue we have regarding the performance bond, which will be explained later, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Jumping to number 12, fees at, fees at 13, inspection fees, your comments, please?
Yeah, I don't, I don't get to see the fees that are submitted to the Borough. The Borough gets, I believe it's a nickel a ton for stone extracted from the quarry. My understanding is that those fees have been paid.
Okay. Now, then, number 14, monitoring well installation outstanding, would you explain that issue, please?
Yeah, again, that's a, another issue that was required by the court. It was also required in the last renewal period that the wells be installed. The quarry submitted us a plan that I reviewed and approved in December of 2016, but the wells have not been installed.
Now, you have another section here called Regulation of Operations. I'll just, since it's online, I don't wanna go over every point, but I'll go to paragraph number five, fencing, would you explain that?
Yes, the quarry is required to maintain a security fence around the perimeter of the property, and during my May 14th inspection, as I walked the perimeter, there were a couple of trees that had fallen and crushed the fence in a few places, and I notified the quarry of that and asked them what they need to repair those. And this has happened before, and they've done it.
Okay. If I can refer to number seven, the crushers, again, for the public edification, what is a crusher?
The, the primary crusher, there are several crushers at the quarry. The primary crusher is required to be enclosed in a, in a sound minimizing fashion, and it has been, that was done years ago, and it's still in compliance with that requirement to enclose.
I'd like to address the issue of blasting with you. Do you, do you have any, as a licensed engineer registered in various states, do you have any input into how blasting is conducted regarding to the quarry?
No. I mean, we're aware of it, you know, we compare a lot of applications for quarries to operate in other states. The blasting is done under a separate permit, under a separate agency, and the blasting plan is prepared by a licensed blast. So, I'm not a licensed blaster, I wouldn't be able to prepare that.
Right. Who oversees blasting in the state of New Jersey, to your knowledge?
Department of Labor.
And, yeah, are you familiar with the regulation, the blasting regulations of the Department of Labor?
Yes.
And, Matty, are they, do they have regulations that are uniform throughout the state?
Yes, there's a uniform code. Now, there's different requirements for certain types of blasting, you know, small little blast, you know, associated maybe with a house foundation excavation, or larger blasts associated maybe in highway construction, and then, you know, blasting like they perform in a quarry.
When a blast is conducted at New Jersey, let's say more specifically at this quarry, how is it monitored to determine whether or not it's in accordance with state regulations?
Well, the first is the blaster submits a plan.
Who does he submit the plan to?
He submits it to the Department of Labor. And he submits a plan on how the blast will be controlled, and how he will maintain the peak particle velocity of less than two feet per second. And that's, that's a, that's a vibration standard that the state of New Jersey has set as a regulation, and that's pretty much in conformance with all the other states in which operate. That's a pretty standard compliance target. Then, when blasts are conducted, the quarry is required to place seismographs at various locations off-site to measure the ground language. And the quarry has been doing that, those reports are submitted to the Department of Labor, and all the ones that I've seen have been in compliance.
So, the enforcing agent is the State Department of Labor regarding blasting, is that correct?
That's correct. We have...
The local municipality has no say over the standards, or the standards of minutia details regarding blasting itself?
That's correct, that's regulated by the state.
Mr. Isken, going back to the performance guarantee, under our ordinance, the performance guarantee, I'll just, I'll just explain it from a legal perspective, is a, it's a bond issued by an insurance company. And what that bond says, that if somebody doesn't do something, the insurance company will give the money that is necessary to do that thing, say, to the municipality. So, if the quarry has to bond a certain procedure or thing, and they default on that, that gives the municipality the right to approach the insurance company and tell them to turn these monies over to the municipality, so the municipality could have the job done. It's a security, it's a performance guarantee, is that how you understand it?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So, the issue you raise in your report regarding the performance guarantee has to do with the reclamation plan, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. So, what our ordinance provides is that, since this, since it's a licensed application for three years, we wanna guarantee that there'll be a reclamation, if in the event the quarry owners go under, there's a default or bankruptcy or something, that we just wouldn't be left with an incomplete project, it just wouldn't be left basically with a mess, to put it bluntly, on the property, that the bond would be sufficient so as to go in there to reclaim it and do what is necessary to make it safe and secure. You understand that?
Yes, that's...
Okay. So, all right, and in your, in your opinion, you reviewed the bond, but more importantly, you reviewed the basis, the analysis of the amount of the bond, and whether or not it was sufficient, is that correct?
Yeah, the ordinance requires that the quarry provide a cost estimate to reclaim the property, the plan submitted with the three-year reclamation plan. That estimate has to be prepared by a licensed engineer registered in the state of New Jersey. They did, the court did submit that estimate calculation. I don't agree with it, and there's a, you know, there's one specific part of the applicant, of the estimate that is the fundamental problem.
And I presume there's been back and forth between you and the quarry engineers over that issue? And I presume there's been back and forth between you and the quarry engineers over that issue, and you have a way to resolve it, is that correct, to your satisfaction?
Yes.
And on that basis, you 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 would not, would you, well, I'll strike that for now. Now, if I go into the monitoring wells, you raised that issue in your report, can you tell us what what the purpose of monitoring wells are?
Yeah, the monitoring wells are located in strategic positions surrounding the quarry that as the quarry advances outward towards the perimeter, that these wells would serve as sentries that, to detect potential problems for private wells that would be on the other side of the sentry well. So, for example, if the, you know, the well maintains a certain static water level and has for a long time, and now the quarry starts advancing towards that well, and we see that static water level start to drop, that would be an indication of a precursor that, well, you know, we need to take a look at this because if they continue to go in that direction, is that then going to affect a private water supply?
Now, have you had any occasion to review any monitoring well proposals submitted by the quarry?
Yes, as I mentioned previously, and the court submitted a plan, and I approved that in December of two thousand sixteen.
Oh, you did approve a plan, okay.
Yes.
Is that correct? All right, and to your knowledge, that that plan has not been implemented, is that correct?
It has not.
Okay, all right. So if, if I were to recite your testimony as a whole with a brief summary, as far as the operational aspects, as you have testified, the quarry is in compliance with the ordinance?
Yes, yes.
All right. As far as the the mapping and documents that were submitted, they are also in compliance with the ordinance?
Yes, yes.
But there are two issues that are not in compliance, is that correct?
Yes, that's the performance bond amount and the installation of the monitoring wells.
And you, do you consider these to be major issues?
Yes, they are.
Yes, okay. I have no further questions, Mayor.
Okay, Mayor, let me take you off of mute here.
So if Mr. Hack or if any of the council members have any questions of Mr. Iskin, this would be the time to do it, and then then we could go on to the next stage?
So, Mayor, does that?
Mr. Hack, you're viewed, you speak.
Yeah, Mayor was asking if anybody had any questions of Mr. Iskin or Mr. Klima. If not, I will, Mayor, I'm going to ask the quarry if they have any questions or want to make any statements?
I believe Mr. Vogel's here. Is anyone else here on behalf of the quarry?
I believe Mr. Brain is here.
Yeah. Mr. Vogel, I'm going to turn all your your mics on. So, Mr. Vogel, do you or your team have anything that you want to add?
No, am I, can, can you hear my my voice at this point?
Everybody can hear you, yes.
Oh, good, thank you. I wasn't aware of that. Yeah, we we've been involved for as long as Mr. Iskin has indicated, he's been involved. Of course, every three years, we make the application. This application is no different than the ones that preceded it. It requires a substantial volume of reports and maps, which we have submitted, and it's the same information upon which the borough has issued licenses in the past. With respect to the bond that's been raised, that issue is one that comes up each time, and we've resolved it every time in the past. It's simply a amount that has to be resolved based upon computations and the availability of information with respect to it. We've we've resolved that, you know, since the mid-nineties, since the ordinance was first adopted, and I'm confident we will resolve it again. It is not a, not the nature of of an element that has to do with how you operate the quarry or whether we're having an effect on neighbors or the operation of the quarry itself. It's really administrative aspect. With respect to the wells that have been raised, it supply a, the report that was requested, we did supply the design, and we did submit it, and it was reviewed by by Mr. Iskin. We haven't reached the stage yet where, as Mr. indicated, Mr. Iskin indicated the reason for the wells, we haven't reached that stage yet where the actual installation, we felt, was was achieved. If that becomes an issue, we will resolve that as well. But if you look at Mr. Iskin's report of May nineteenth, you will see that we have spent considerable period of time in satisfying all the requirements of your ordinance. I might say that I do this on a regular basis in many municipalities. The requirements of Ringwood are beyond what virtually every other municipality in the state requires with respect to a licensed renewal on a quarry, and I am gratified that the report that Mr. Iskin has filed indicates satisfaction with the requirements of the filing and the compliance in the operation of the quarry. On prior occasions, quarry has pledged its operation in collaboration with the the borough so as to be able to be operated in a manner which would have the least effect on any surrounding properties and the citizens, and I believe we've been able to do that. And we will continue to use our best practices in operating the quarry. And we've been in this process for quite some time, and we're looking forward to the license being renewed. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Brain, do you have any comments to make?
I don't know if he's still on.
Yeah, I'm here. I don't have any comments. Thank you.
Mr. Vogel, you you also have another, you're in here twice. Is there somebody else that would like to speak? Who was the other individual? Just for the record.
No, I have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mayor, so would you like, we do have some public, would you like me to open the public for any input?
We'll open public hearing on the application to the general public and to state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Jason, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, can you hear me?
Yes, you are, you you can go ahead and just state your name and address for the record.
Okay, Jason Kifner, I'm at forty-four Summit Point Road in Ringwood. I just noticed, like, looking through the permit application, there are a few of the permits that were submitted in the permit section seem to be expired, particularly the mine regulation certificate expired on three thirty-one, explosives usage, or explosives used, expired on April thirtieth, the truck scale on January thirty-first. So I'm wondering if they've been renewed? Somebody could mention?
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Brain or Mr. Maybe Mr. Brain or Mr. Vogel could comment on that?
Well, well, all those are permits that we, that are issued for a given period of time, and when, if you look at when we filed this, your ordinance requires that we file the application six months before it is the prior application, prior license expires. And those were the dates of those permits when we did file, which is, what, nine months ago? Something like that, maybe ten months ago? So those those permits are all still, still valid and still seasonable. They are, if the comment there is that those those are not valid licenses, it's not correct. Those licenses still exist.
But they're past the expiration date, correct? On the certificates?
Mr. 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 Kifner, I took a look at the licenses. They were valid at the time they were submitted, and they are valid now, but that was the paperwork that came in with the application. It stays with the application until it's, until it's complete. So at this point, they are, we can ask the quarry to submit us, renew, they renew them every year, they can, they can submit the new ones. But yes, they are currently active.
So you guys are going to ask to do that?
Well, if the only, if the application is granted, it would be subject to the the renewals.
Okay.
Yeah, that's best in the normal case, as as the previous speaker said. On the day of the application, we we get these documents as of the day of the application, and these applications are on for a long time.
I understand, yeah, that's understandable, so the township will get the application, or get the renewals then?
Yes.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
We have, hold on, Mayor, we have Mr. Veith. Carl, can you hear us? You have to unmute your your computer there.
There we go. Can you hear me now, Scott?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Carl Veith, one fifty Dale Road. I've got a number of concerns. One is the size of the stockpiles. Are there any limits on how high they are? In particular, you know, my property sits above the quarry, and those stockpiles continue to get higher, where even on the lowest part of my property, they are now visible, where in the past they haven't been. So it appears that as they continue to mine, keep on elevating a large portion of the quarry or stockpiles, you know, what's what's very visible is the aggregate, you know, the stone, it's big, it's white. It appears that, you know, they continue to, I guess it's the silping ponds, you know, the the area closest to Dale Road, kind of like the corner by Robin Moles's property, you know, they continue to build that up with more and more material. So, you know, we we always talk about the quarry, how deep it goes, but it's also getting higher and more visible, you know, and along with that visibility, it's louder, you know, so as the machines work, work those areas where they're preparing their silting, you know, there, those those machines are visible, much louder, you know, the stockpiles being high, you know, more dust, which is continually a problem for us. So I'm concerned, are there any limitations to that, you know, and, you know, it's a three-year license? So, you know, as these things change over time, they become worse, right? Where before it wasn't visible, now it is visible, more noisy, it's dustier. So, you know, is there, is there any way to limit that, you know, and limit that intrusion? Because it's, you know, the thought was the deeper, you know, in past meetings, deeper they go, potentially, you know, the less we'll hear it, et cetera. Well, that's not turning out to be the case. Maybe the actual excavation of mining, the hole on Westbrook, you know, is getting deeper. Other areas are getting higher, more visible, you know, so that's a concern. Any thoughts on that, Mr. Iskin?
Mr. Veith, yes. First of all, the quarry ordinance does not have a limit on the height of the stockpiles. However, I have the most recent aerial topography from the December of nineteen, and your your property is roughly around elevation five fifty. The the highest stockpile currently is at about elevation four fifty, so it's about a hundred feet below, below your house. The high wall, for example, where the fences, that runs at about elevation five hundred. So, you know, right now, they are, it may, it may look like it, but they are about a hundred feet below you, and.
But that's truly not possible, because if I can see the pile, and I sense, Scott, a picture I took today, if I could see that pile from the lowest part of my property, it can't possibly be, you know.
Well, and I'm just looking at this map for first time. There's another pile that's at about five hundred. It's still below your property. These piles actually become self-limiting because the the side slopes require them, just for stability, to keep getting narrower as the top gets. It looks like they're probably where they're at now, about as tight as they're going to be able to go. But again, there's no limit on the height of the pile in the quarry ordinance.
If I could ask Mr. Mr. Veith a question, can you, can, when you see the height of the pile, is it from your boundary line, is it from your house?
Actually, close to the, the lowest part of my property where the pond used to be, that is now dry, I took a picture from there. So it's not like I'm, you know, my house sits, you know, fifty feet above that, you know, so I'm not even talking about looking at it from my house, from my deck. I'm talking about being able to see the pile from the lowest part of my property. So, you know, it's significantly higher.
If it's higher than the lowest part of your property, Carl, is that what you're saying?
Excuse me?
It's higher, the pile's higher than the lowest part of your property, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I would, I would expect, because I can see them, right?
Okay.
That that visibility is concerning, you know, if it's more visible, you know, the higher it gets, the more dust potentially globed in our direction, you know, so it's a concern.
Hold on. Do Mr. Brain or Mr. Vogel have any comment on that?
No, I don't have any comment. I I understand what Mr. Veith is saying. You know, Mr. Veith's property is the most proximate to the quarry. It's, and we're always very concerned about not having an adverse effect on him. I understand what his concerns are. I will certainly have it looked into. I I understand what Mr. Iskin has said. I don't know what the heights are. I don't know what, this is an issue that's raised for the first time, but as I've said before, our primary interest with respect to the neighbors is to be as least intrusive as possible. So we'll take a look at it again. I mean, we just, you just heard about it tonight, and if we, if we need to, we'll get hold of Mr. Veith and talk to him.
Mr. Veith, I I just forwarded that picture you sent, I guess you sent me that this evening. I just forwarded that to Mr. Iskin.
Yeah, and, Mr. Veith, I see what you mean. I was referring to up where your house is. Yeah, down where your, the lower corner of your property, it's, yeah, it's probably about level, maybe a little bit, little bit higher down there. But as I said before, there, the ordinance does not have a limit on pile height.
Remember, the ordinance, as Mr. Vogel said, his client will look into it, and I assume there'll be dialogue with his, with Mr. Veith and with the borough to see if that can be resolved. Because, you know, we won't, you know, we won't let the issue alone to see if there's a reasonable way to resolve that, so keep this as an issue.
Important that, as we go back, I'm sure we will recall. Important that, as we go back, I'm sure we will recall, you know, there were plantings, you know, berms put up in plantings with the explicit purpose of providing a visual barrier, you know, so that we wouldn't see the quarry in the operations, you know. So, the whole purpose of the berms and the plantings were for visual barriers, and that's not adequate any longer because of what they're, you know, how they're progressing under mining. So, you know, I know you can say there's no limitation, but in good faith, when you say, hey, we put up berms and visual barriers for the explicit purpose of not being able to see. So, as now they mine more and they build up these stockpiles, you know, and as, for instance, the silting ponds, right? Two of those things have, over the course of years, have gone up many, you know, 50, 100 feet, I have no way of telling, except that you can see it. So, in the past, we provided berms and visual barriers in the form of trees. This from it, that's no longer adequate. It's not working. So, it's something that, you know, you can, you can figure, you know, no limit to what they do, but then it really is, it's not aligned to what the purpose of berms and plantings were made for.
Well, I think what Mr. Veeth, his analysis, I think, is on point. You know, this ordinance was written 20, 25 years ago, and he did provide the berms and trees for visual barrier. That was the point. Times change, you know. We, the ordinance can also be adjusted to reflect new issues. Issues come up that were not anticipated 20 years ago. The piles get larger and they get higher and higher over the years. They get higher, they get lower, but this particular issue was not contemplated. So, we're not frozen in time as far as the quarry regulations. They all have to, they always have to be reasonable, but as Mr. Veeth said, one of the key points was to give the neighbors some visual protection from the operation of the quarry. So, I think, you know, as Mr. Vogel said, I think we'll hold it more to dialogue with Mr. Veeth and with us, and we'll see what solution can come out of that, including if we have to take another look at the quarry regulations in that particular area.
Mr. Veeth, you had a couple other things that you wanted to discuss?
Yes, just a couple. With the rehabilitation plan, you know, currently, there's a very large and deep hole, as we well know. In that rehabilitation plan, is it to fill that hole? I guess that would be...
Mr. Iskin?
I didn't hear the end of the question.
He asked if you would be filling, the rehabilitation plan to fill that deep hole?
Yes.
Okay. And then, you know, kind of aligns with, you know, performance bond, et cetera. You know, the material, to fill that hole, is that currently on site? What is the plan to, you know, if we're taking out 400,000 tons a year, you know, as it goes by, it's just more and more material. Where will that material come from? Is it currently on site or is it something that then would have to import in order to fill?
There is some material on site. The majority of it is going to have to be imported, and that is part of the issue we have with the performance bond.
And then, I guess into, you know, the performance bond, you know, I expect as each year, you know, the amount of excavation is more and more. For the course of the last few licensing agreements, has that bond amount gone up? Because I would expect that, you know, the more that's taken out, the more you have to put in, and therefore, you know, that bond, each licensing period, the amount of that bond would have to increase, you know, to cover the additional work. So, has the performance bond amount gone up over the last few quarry licenses?
Part of the issue in the present bond is, what should the amount be? Because if there's going to be an increase, the question is, what is the increase? That's the debate that's going on.
And then, I guess, you know, the, another question I would add then is, I believe it was stated that the monitoring wells, the plan for the wells was approved back in December 2016. Is that, is that true, Sean?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So, here are some, you know, three and a half years later, and there are no wells. You know, so, you know, at what point, you know, do we think that that is a showstopper for approving a license? Where, you know, it's been more than the last licensing agreement, right? Three more years has transpired and we yet don't have wells, you know. So, at what point does that say, hey, without, you know, wells and getting that done, we can't approve it? Because will it be this another three years or...
Well, here's where we are, Carl. That the last license approval, it was stated the monitoring wells have to be in place by this license approval period. They are not. That is a major issue.
Yeah, well, let's be clear about that.
Oh, hey, listen, gentlemen, listen, we're going to have to wait one at a time because otherwise the recording is not going to be, not going to be accurate. So, so, Mr. Kleemack, were you done with your statement?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Vogel?
Yeah, I want to be clear about these wells because I don't want to be hung up on a canard that has no validity. In the first instance, neither your ordinance nor any plan requires such wells. The borough requested that we do a study for such wells, and we spent a considerable amount of money, time, effort, hired outside consultants, and did the study. Mr. Iskin this evening has stated the reasons for the study, and that is as a quarry goes and spreads out, there'd be a concern as to whether or not there would be some effect upon the water table. So, we did the study to give it to you. The necessity for the study does not yet exist with respect to where we are with respect to the quarry, number one. Number two, we did the study for the wells, as Mr. Iskin indicated, and those studies go all the way back. We did two of them. We did one when we first, when the ordinance was first adopted, and then we did a second one of all properties within 500 feet. No well has ever made a claim against the quarry for having been affected by the quarry's operation. So, let's be careful about simply saying, well, we should stick in a bunch of wells when the time for those wells has not yet ripe. We are, we did the study you asked us to do. We did a complete study. As a matter of fact, the study was approved by Mr. Iskin because it was such a thorough study. But the place on us, the idea that we didn't put in something that was required, I don't believe is fair.
Thank you, Mr. Vogel.
Well, Mr. Vogel and I will disagree on that point, but the last quarry approval stated clearly that the wells should be installed, would have to be installed by this quarry approval period.
On what basis?
Okay, hold on, guys, listen. Okay, listen. Listen, Mr. Vogel, listen, we are not going to have this back and forth because it's not going to be on the record. If you want to speak, wait, I will recognize you, but we can't, we don't pick up anything but noise. So, so, at this point, Mr. Kleemack, were you done?
And that was a decision, that was part of a resolution which was not appealed. Okay? That was not taken to court. It was not challenged. Therefore, it's valid.
Okay. Mr. Vogel?
As the borough is saying.
Mr. Vogel, very brief, and then...
I made my statement with respect to the wells. So, my position is fairly stated. I don't want to get into an argument about it. You know, we spent a lot of time and effort putting together everything that, with respect, that's required with respect to the application. We run a good quarry. There's two issues here which I would like to resolve. We're going to have people go to Mr. Veeth's house and meet with Mr. Veeth and attempt to take care of his issues. I'm not, you know, as I've said before, this is a collaborative effort. We operate a quarry. We operate it as best we can. I'm not going to argue about, about the bond. I'm not going to argue about the wells. I'm going to try and resolve both of them in a fair and rational manner. But they are items, and we will continue to discuss them.
Thank you. Sean, did you have, did you have something to say? I thought I saw your... Did you have anything to add to that or not, not really, Sean?
I'm sorry, you didn't hear that?
No. Sean, do you have anything to add to that or no?
I, well, there are two outstanding issues in addition to what Mr. Veeth brought up. The wells, you know, my intention when I approved those in December was they were installed. Now, the purpose of those is to provide background data over time to demonstrate what the water table is, and, you know, you can't wait until the year before and decide to put them in. That's not the purpose of those wells. We do this all the time, and these wells are put in well in advance of mining for the very purpose of establishing background and seasonal and year-to-year fluctuations in ground.
Thank you. I'm going to go back and see if Carl's done because we still have one more person after Carl. Carl, is there anything else that you wanted to add?
Yeah, I think that truly covers it with the one exception. When, when we talked about monitoring wells, within that plan, you know, is, is it listed, assuming, you know, the wells are in place, is it listed how often those, the results of, you know, the depth, the water table would be reported? You know, as Sean just mentioned, you know, it's to give a historical perspective, to have them in advance so you can see, you know, that year by year, season by season, there's a history built up, and you can see its water table going down or not. So, assuming the well were put in, you know, Sean, do you know what the provision is? How often those, you know, water table would be reported so that we could keep record of it?
Typically, they're monitored, it's a simple static water level. They're monitored quarterly. I'd have to go back and look at the plan. It's been many years. I haven't done that, but typically, it's done quarterly throughout the year.
Okay, thank you. I think that covers it, Scott. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Else?
We have Kerry. Can you hear me?
Yes, hi. I'm Kerry Cosma, 41 Dale Road. My husband and I live here. He bought the house in 2005, and I've lived here since we married in 2013. It's a lovely town, absolutely lovely. Our issue with the quarry is the disturbance to the neighbors, us being the neighbors. So, the blast is what we feel in our home and here. The first time I heard it, when I moved in and felt it, I went bolting for the bathtub just trying to figure out where am I supposed to go? There's an earthquake. My husband explained it's the quarry blast. So, you know, we suffer with it, but it is, it is a disturbance. It's, if you know that scene in Mary Poppins where you've got to hold on to all the pictures and the knickknacks, that's what we feel in our lovely home here. So, I just wanted to voice our opposition to the renewal. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mayor, at this point, there's no more public.
Okay. Can I have a motion to close public?
McCracken, I'll make the motion to close the public.
Have a second. I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spear?
Yes.
Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Matty Olandis?
Yes.
McCracken?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kleemack, is this the time you would do a resolution?
Well, okay, and I'd just like to give a summary of what I, what I've heard from the testimony, and I, of course, my impression may be different than yours, so, a council member, okay? Mr. Iskin testified as to the character of the quarry, as to the application, the varied components, and testified that the documents were in order. He reviewed the maps and plans and found those in order. He reviewed the operations as it set forth in his report and basically found, and found those in order, except for the two items that we know. Once, once a citizen did speak about some of the permits in the application being dated, and as we explained, and this happens, that at the time they were submitted, they're up to date, but they just, they just lay in the file, and, but they would, they would have to be updated. Mr. Veeth's testimony about the height of the stockpiles, that's a new issue. When this ordinance was written, it was not contemplated, and he's correct that the reason berms and trees are required is to give official barrier, and that's something that has to be looked at. Ms. Cosma, on the blasting, that's, that's been a current issue. We, we are bound by state laws. Unfortunately, the Department of Labor controls that. We cannot, we cannot interfere as to how blasting is done, what its sequencing is or any of those matters. It's supposedly under the experts of the state of New Jersey. They, they get the blasting reports from seismographs, and they're supposed to police it. At times, we have access to those reports. Anybody can get, any citizen can make an open, an open request. That's a request for documents, and we have done that at times to get the, to get the reports and to see if they are in order, the seismograph reports. Not that we're experts in interpreting them, but we do ask their people if there are any violations, and they haven't pointed them out to us. As far as the performance bond, I think that's been discussed in detail at two. It's point, Mr. Vogel, on behalf of the quarry, expressed an intention and interest in continuing discussion to see if we could come through some resolution there. And as far as the monitoring wells, you know, there's a disagreement between lawyers as to the legal requirement of those wells, but you do know what those wells do, what their purpose is, okay? I think Mr. Iskin said they serve as a sentinel or a sentry regarding things there. Some facets of the quarry that are unique to this quarry but not other quarries in New Jersey. First of all, to my knowledge, this is the only quarry that has a cap on production. There was litigation, and a judge ordered a cap at 413,000 tons a year, which is, which is a lot lower than what they were doing. So, that's a, that's a constraint they operate with at all times that, to my knowledge, no other quarry does. Also, to my knowledge, they do pay an extraction fee. It is five cents a ton, and if you argue that's not a lot of money, it's 20-some thousand a year. But again, to my knowledge, I don't know of any other quarry that pays any extraction fee. Now, so, it's up to the council, and you can, you'll have a chance to ask your questions and offer your judgments as to the testimony you heard and as to the outstanding issue and how serious they are and how you want to proceed based upon what you heard. Thank you.
Mr. Kleemack, one technical question. The, the original hearing, the first hearing, is all part of this record as well? For the people who came to that hearing?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. So, Mayor, I leave it to you for discussion.
Does anyone on the council have any questions?
Mayor Schaefer, I have a concern. This is councilwoman...
Mayor Schaefer, I have a concern. This is Councilwoman O'Keefe.
Yes.
We heard talk about these wells, monitoring wells, and how important they are for historical perspective on the private water supply of the residents in this area. We know that they do not have access to public water, and therefore, this is a huge concern, and I think that Mr. Beeth had testified in the previous council meeting that a pond that used to exist on his property has disappeared. So my concern is that if these wells were to be put in place as per this licensing hearing, that it's important, in fact, it's imperative that these wells be in place so that we can protect the water supply of these residents, given that they have no other option. Thank you. Thank you. Now, one of my concerns also is in the last application, the quarry was supposed to put in monitoring wells, and they failed to do that. And in good faith, we renewed their license. And now, there's other concerns that Mr. Beeth has brought up. So I'm not happy with anything that is brought up.
If I went, if I may, Mayor, I would tend to agree with you. From the testimony, monitoring wells were, that was talked about in December 2016, wells have not been installed. Those wells, to my understanding, are located strategically. As the quarry advances, the wells are going to detect potential problems for private wells. To me, that seems critically important, given what Mr. Klimak has said, that it was in fact required of them for this go-around. That is a major concern. The performance bond is also a major concern too, because I think that our job as council members is to make sure that the borough is protected in the event that something does happen, in the event that, that the quarry is not able to maintain their functions, so that it allows us to reclaim the property if, in the event of a default. Given those two things, you know, I would suggest, you know, that it's problematic.
Thank you. Anyone else?
This is Councilwoman Freddy. I'd just like to say that I agree.
Thank you.
Hi, it's Brian. I won't drag it out, but I will echo literally everything that each of you has said before. Thank you for articulating it so well.
Anyone else?
It counts, Mr. McCracken. I'd say I do agree with everything the other council people have said already too, and I do also recognize that this is a decision that is going to weigh heavily on, and I'm sure it does with everybody else, because no one wants to see anyone else lose a job during this tough time that we're going through already. But at the same time, I do recognize that we were voted and put into office to look after the best interests of not only the borough of Ringwood, but especially its residents. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Klimak?
Yes.
We have a resolution?
Well, let me, just so I understand where you're going. Here's the voting alternatives the council has. Number one, they could, they could approve it as submitted, which obviously would not happen. They could approve it. Mr. Vogel says that his client is ready and available to discuss the issues regarding the performance guarantee, which I will say has been the subject of a lot of discussion. There's reasonable differences on it, but it has to come to some conclusion. And the third thing is the, then there is the monitoring wells, okay? Your alternatives are, again, to approve it as submitted, or approve it subject to these two matters being resolved within a certain period of time, or the third is take a negative action. These are, these are your choices in the matter.
Madam Mayor? John Spear?
Yes.
I think I'd want to make a motion that we extend the existing quarry license for 90 days. In that 90 days, hopefully, the monitoring wells can be installed, and the discussions on the value of the maintenance, you know, the performance bond could be finalized, and we can pick up a hearing and decide on this next three-year quarry term. So I would say we extend this license for 90 days.
Is that a motion, sir?
That's a motion.
Is there a second?
It's Ryan. I'll second that approach.
Okay, roll call.
Mayor Schaefer?
Although, yes, I want to extend it for 90 days, but I don't foresee that we're going to come to any agreement in 90 days. But I'll vote yes, but we'll be talking in 90 days.
Deputy Mayor Spear?
Yes.
Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Freddy?
Yes.
Matty Olandis?
Yes.
McCracken?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
No.
So, Mr. Klimak, I have...
I've been taking notes as the discussion went on. I was, I was going to have a rather, I was preparing a yes and no resolution, not knowing which way you're going, but I think it's been so clearly stated by the deputy mayor that I, my input is not necessary. I think the motion is clear. The quarry clearly has a statement of the council's direction, and I think it's reasonable under the circumstances. Thank you.
Okay. So just for clarification for the office part, so 90 days from today, unless it's renewed by this body, the license expires.
Correct.
Is that, okay, well, let's make that clear, because that wasn't stated in the motion. So if those, if those issues are not, this will be a supplemental motion, that if the issues as raised and explained by the deputy mayor are not resolved to the satisfaction of the municipality, that the license will be deemed terminated automatically in 90 days.
Mayor, I was only, Mayor, I was only asking a question, that's all. I wasn't, I wasn't directing in any way. I was just asking, for our purposes.
Well, the reason I brought that up, because as I heard the motion, I would not have interpreted it that way. I would have interpreted, if it's not done in 90 days, then it's back before us, and you make a final decision. So if you want to clarify it, one or the other, that's your, that's your discretion.
I just want to make sure it's clear, that's all.
We have a motion?
Let me ask, Mr. Deputy Mayor, is that your, is that your position?
Counselor, I don't want to grant the license for the next three-year period yet. We have, we have work that's not been done under this licensing period. I think we should extend this licensing period and give the opportunity, because it appears to me that, that the governing body is ready to deny the license, and the quarry is going to need time to wind down operations at a minimum, and we should give them a little bit of additional time to try to remedy the problem. I've been looking for these monitoring wells since the quarry submitted a report by those M2 hydrogeologists in 2010. I've been waiting for monitoring wells to appear on the site. They're not here yet. Hopefully, within the next 90 days, they could be, they could be performed, and we can, we can settle this issue with the bond.
All right. So will, should we just, as you said, should we leave your, the motion that you introduced with second and pass, leave it as is with no supplemental motion?
I fully expect that there'll be another, there'll be another meeting of this body to discuss this.
That's, that was my interpretation also, okay?
This is time. Is there any other comments, counsel? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Councilman McCracken, I'll make a motion.
It's Ryan. I'll second.
Roll call.
Mayor Schaefer? Mayor?
Mayor Schaefer?
Deputy Mayor Spear?
Yes.
Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Freddy?
Yes.
Matty Olandis?
Yes.
McCracken?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Hey, good night.
Thank you.
Good night, good night. Good night.